Going live. And we are live.
Good evening. My name is Joe Stronowski, Chair of the Rockport Planning Board. At this time, we have four individuals present from the planning board that represents a quorum. So we do have sufficient attendance for quorum. So I'm officially calling this meeting on February 15th at 5:30 to order. The planning board is comprised of volunteers appointed at the discretion of the select board. Our charge is to ensure that the applications that come before us comply with the town's lane use ordinance and Rockport comprehensive plan. This evening, we have just a few items, two items on the agenda. One is a pre-application for a property at 1075 Commercial Street. And then we also need to finalize the findings of fact from our previous meeting. So before we get started, this is just a pre-application, but is there anybody, anyone on the board that would like to, at this time, identify any conflict of interest that would cause you not to be able to judge the application or pre-application presented this evening fairly? If so, please identify those conflicts now. Hearing no conflicts, we'll go ahead and proceed. Since this is a pre-application, just for the review of the board members and public that may be watching, we typically do not accept public comment on pre-applications because the pre-application is an informal process. It's just, the purpose of it is to allow the board to identify any concerns prior to the final site plan and likewise allow the applicant to ask the board any questions prior to submitting that final site plan. So for that reason, we don't accept public comment during the pre-application, but we will, of course, during the final application. So with that, Bill Lane I see here representing the 1075 Commercial Street property. Let me just introduce it formally. So this is consideration of a pre-application site plan review for a property located at 1075 Commercial Street, Rockport, Maine, and is identified as map 002 lot 169. This property is under a purchase and sale agreement between VIP Inc., the buyer, and JL Enterprises, the current owner, and is being represented by William Gartley this evening with Bill Lane here. And I believe from what I'm told that there might also be some representatives online.
That's correct. So, good evening. My name is Bill Lane from Gartley and Dorsey in Engineering and Surveying. And also present this evening, I believe, is Mr. Quark from VIP and possibly Mr. Kirkland from VIP, remote via Teams. As stated, VIP has a purchase and sale agreement on the property, which is presently owned by JL Enterprises. And this board had recently, relatively recently in the history of the property, permitted a change of use to retail and office. As I understand it, that has not been occupied, but that vacant building is now the proposal that we're bringing forward to build yet another VIP store. The existing building in Rockland where VIP operates out of will be occupied by its current co-tenant, O'Reilly, and VIP will move their operation to this location and of necessity build service bays. So we are proposing the change of use as well as to construct an eight-bay addition. Because this is the 906 with a 5,000-square-foot footprint limit, we would incorporate a connector design into that configuration. We have submitted a preliminary plan for your review and information and happy to answer any questions. The general overview, this property was developed as a restaurant initially, at which time a fairly substantial ledge cut occurred so that the property slopes from the rear of the property to the road is improved with the approximately 4,600-square-foot footprint building and parking spaces on the west, or the north end, the south, however you like to view that configuration. And served by two curb cuts on Route 1. We would be proposing to maintain those curb cuts and modify the parking arrangement so that we can maintain configuration around the rear of the property, allocate space for the proposed addition, and then provide access and an enhanced directional entry into the showroom area of the building, which would be the initial component of the construction, incorporating some part of the connector as well as the, what I view as the northeast corner of the existing building. So we would like to confirm with you that this proposed retail and automotive service operation isn't allowed use within the 906, which I don't think is controversial, but we'd like to lock that down. And beyond that, we're happy to answer questions that you may have at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. I don't know if there's anything individuals online would like to say as introductory remarks or you represent them all.
I'm happy to defer, it does look like.
And if we hear, there we go.
There's Mr. Quark.
Hi, everybody. I'm John Quark, the owner of VIP Inc. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have, and we look forward to moving from Rockland to Rockport. It's about eight-tenths of a mile from our existing site where we've operated for nearly 30 years. So thank you for your time this evening.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So with that, I'll open it to the board for any questions. And so again, I remind you, this is not a detailed review. We don't have a detailed plan. Just looking for big-picture items here if you have any concerns about things or things you'd like to make sure that the applicant does cover in the final submittal. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah. Could you talk a little bit about where the expansion is going to occur and where this connector is going to be? I don't see that here.
Yep, sure. So in the plan, there are two shaded areas. The lighter tan is the existing footprint of the restaurant itself. To the north of that, there is presently a cooler that would be demolished, and that would be the beginning. And Orion is highlighting that now on the screen. That would be demolished and be the beginning of the addition to the north.
So all the, the service bays would actually constitute the addition?
Yes.
And then this, this little thing just to the left of the cooler is the connector that you're talking about?
Correct. Yep, yep. And so within the limits, I believe that we're allowed sort of a maximum of 700 square feet in the footprint of the connector. And the additional standard is that it be separated back from the front facade by four feet. Some other elements need to be implemented, and we are not at that maximum size. And so this is presently the proposed configuration, and it may enlarge or get a little bit smaller. But that connector element is part of it.
Customers are going to enter from the south end of the building?
No. They would be entering from the north. Yep. So at present, there were two ways to get into the restaurant, and there was a vestibule to the south that we'd be de-emphasizing and utilizing the north corner and the connector addition to bring customers into that space.
I'm sorry. So just to clarify that, maybe I thought differently when I looked at it originally. There is nothing at all, not even a secondary entrance on that south side? Nothing?
Not for, not for customer utilization.
Okay.
They may, in doing a life safety analysis, the architect may determine that those doors are maintained for regress, but they're not a focus of access.
Okay. So those individuals that do park on the south side would just walk down the sidewalk?
Walk up that walk, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And so for clarity, when you're, when we're saying north, we're talking about on this drawing, the right side?
Correct.
Have a question. Are the driveways intended to be both in and out?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any kind of, like, reason one would take one driveway versus the other, like, to use the auto-service versus the other parking lot?
No, no. So I would expect that people would be favoring utilizing the more northerly driveway, but we're maintaining both for the necessary deliveries and circulation.
Okay. Another question I had was, at the top of this screen where it says 73.5, if you could scroll up, Orion, just a little bit, that is, it says existing concrete dumpster slab. Is that intended to be reused as a dumpster slab? And will it be the location for all of the waste that's produced in the store, or will there be other designated locations for waste products?
So that would be the location at present for solid waste. And there would be, as annotated in our narrative to you, one location in the rear of the addition where a trailer body would be set for scrap tires.
Would that be behind that new area of the garage area?
Correct.
You expect? Okay.
So it would be, you know, screened from sight.
Not above the roof.
Maybe I've got my directions mixed up. What, what is the tan building going to be used for?
So all of the new addition is going to be service bays, with the exception of some portion of the connector is going to be customer waiting area, showroom, service writing.
I mean, to the left, the original.
To the left, the, the original portion of the building is largely inventory.
I see.
So the customers, I see, customers typically would not access the older, existing portion of the building?
Correct.
Well, there would be, I presume there would be a waiting room there for customers?
Yeah. There's, there's a waiting room that, yet to be designed, what the full footprint is within the connector and the existing building, but it would occupy that north side.
So all the, all the parking to the south side of the building would be for employees, basically?
I would expect that employees would be encouraged to park there, and then that would be overflow parking available to, to customers.
I did, Matt? I did, I did a quick measurement, and it looks to me like the combined space of the two buildings is about 10,000 square feet, and the lot is about 65,000 square feet. That's correct?
I don't have the lot area with me. It sounded a little light. I thought it was.
I thought the lot was four acres.
Larger than that, four-ish acres.
Okay, okay. But there is plenty of room for, for the building to rest comfortably.
Yes. I mean, we're, we're not going to push back that ledge cut any. Yeah.
So, let's see, a couple of questions. Bill, you, in your introductory remarks, you said that the, only the VIP portion of the existing business that's in Rockland would be moving up here.
Correct.
And so I happened to visit that enterprise once or twice. So that means, just understanding the differences here, O'Reilly operates the front retail portion, and VIP just basically operates the garage portion? Is that, is that what it is? And that's what will be moving up here?
That, that's correct. VIP operates tires and service as, as the primacy of their business. So O'Reilly, by contrast, sells parts and accessories.
That's retail.
And they don't service vehicles.
Right.
So O'Reilly is a tenant of VIP in quite a few locations.
I see.
But the entirety of their operation, meaning O'Reilly, would remain in Rockland on Camden Street. And this would be VIP's branding and signage, and it would be their tires and service operation, specifically.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. With the trailer behind the garage area there, there'll still be room to circulate around the back?
Correct.
For vehicles?
Yep.
Okay. When product is delivered, I assume tires and other things are delivered, what, how is that delivered? What kind of truck does that come in? Is that a semi-truck that comes in?
I could defer to Mr. Quark. I presume it's going to be straight bodies or, or semis.
Yeah. Typically, Bill, we have straight, single-axle trucks with roll-up door that will circulate behind the building to a receiving door that will accept the deliveries.
Okay. And the reason for my question is, as we went forward, I just wanted to make sure if it was semis, that there was adequate space in the parking lot around the building to circulate a semi.
Yep.
But if that's not the case, then.
Correct. Well, we will have that trailer body that I mentioned, so we've assessed it for circulating that through the, through the site, and that's, that's feasible by coming in the one curb cut and then exit.
Okay. So that'll actually be moved out, or it'll be hooked up to a truck?
Right.
Taken out?
Right. It's a trailer body that would be delivered, filled.
I see.
And then swapped out.
Okay, okay. And so you'll make sure, you could probably do that during the off-hours, I assume, when there's no cars, no parking lot.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. I noticed, looking at this, and I guess I'd never realized it, driving by the property all these years, that those, those two driveways are at angles.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know why they did that. You're not planning on changing that? Just leave them at angles the way they are there?
That is correct. We're proposing to maintain the entrances as they are, as you're well aware. This is retrograde arterial now, and under the access management rules, it would be problematic to make any modifications in the DOT right away.
Okay. All right.
Other, other changes that you're making, excuse me, to the parking lot are minimal, correct? Like, you're not, you're not increasing the size of the pad for parking?
Correct. We're utilizing the existing paved footprint for the reconfigured parking as well as for the addition.
Okay. So the number of spaces will actually be reduced from what it currently is?
Yes, but that was, you know, more than, more than sufficient for this operation.
And sooner you meet your minimum for use.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Tom, Jan?
I know. I'm, I'm just glad to see them coming in and using that space. Welcome to Rockport.
Yep, yep. Looks like good use of that property.
Yes, and good luck.
Yep.
Did they answer your question real quick about the use?
Oh, yeah. Let's, let's just do that real quick. And so we don't usually vote on anything or give you a specific ruling, but I realize that you are going to incur expense here, and that you'd like to just make sure that it is allowed at least under Section 900 in this zone. So I refer the board members to Section 906. Actually, 917 tables.
Right.
Table C, the commercial table. I think this could be considered maybe two different ways. There is an auto-service sales. I don't know if that was originally intended to be an auto dealer with service and sales, but this is auto-service. And then also, it could be considered retail.
Right.
So either way, both of those uses, I believe, I read it as being acceptable in the 906 district. Do I have a different opinion?
No.
Tom, you good with that?
I think so.
Yeah? Okay.
That's appreciated.
For non-votes.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Good. Well, looking forward to seeing you back. Yes, sir.
One last thing. So I don't know how much experience each of you, maybe Joe, with connectors, so do y'all have any questions about the connector portion of this that Bill could answer for you today?
You are, I presume you are meeting the existing standard for the connector?
Yeah. Our objective is to comply with the standard as defined.
Yeah. I'm familiar with connectors, because we challenged the, and it actually changed last time in ORC after we challenged the way it was written. Just wasn't very clear last time. And one of the things I might ask or suggest is that VIP has a pretty attractive-looking building, the facade of the building in Rockland, and I would hope that there would be an equally as attractive facade when they do go to an architect with this new section, new addition also. Just so it's not just plain metal garage doors or anything like that. I'd like to see something at least attractive in that neighborhood. There are some attractive buildings there.
The existing building is not unattractive.
No, no, no. Not the existing building, just the new addition. No. Yeah, the new addition. Maybe make it a little bit interesting somehow. Doesn't need to be fancy, but something, just so it's not a long, flat, metal structure.
Understood.
One of the things I'd like to let you know is that all the overhead doors are going to be glass.
Oh, that's nice.
So we, we find them to be much more appealing from the curb appeal perspective, but also gives greater visibility to the service operation when people are driving by. They can see instantly that we're in the service business. And it also gets daylight into the, into the shop, which can, you know, keep things bright at different times of the day.
And so that's good. I understand that, and I have no problem with that. That would be all glass and metal, and so hopefully the rest of what surrounds it will maybe soften it just a little bit.
All right. That's our intentions.
Yeah, yeah. Just not all straight lines and glass and metal.
Right.
That's all. Good. I think we're thinking the same way. Okay. I think that's it then. Bill, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Pleasure meeting you all. Thanks. We look forward to coming to town soon, and we look forward to the meeting next month.
Great. You'll be here next month. That's, that's wonderful.
Thanks for coming to Rockport.
Yep. Thanks for coming to Rockport. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is.
Thank you. Actually, the first item.
First item. Well, yeah. Sorry. I did jump ahead.
That's all right.
Okay. So let's go back in approved minutes. We do have one set of minutes here, and that was from last week's meeting. And I believe that everybody here was in attendance, since we had seven here last week, so everyone is eligible to vote. Okay. Why don't we start off on the top of the minutes, and let's go through page one. Where's your comment, Jan?
My comment is on page three of nine, public comment. You refer to Dr. Steinglass as Vic. I'm wondering whether, I mean, that's what he's known as, whether we should be using proper names or whether it's just fine to use a nickname like that?
Or, I'm sorry, let's see. I see Mr. Steinglass.
Well, it says Vic Stein.
It should probably say Mr. Steinglass.
Yes. It could say, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not for the first one, though.
Yeah. Oh, is it Victor? I don't know his first name.
I only ever heard Vic.
Jan?
I think he identified himself as a meeting, I recall, as Vic.
Yeah. He did.
That could be. And on the same page.
So you're okay with that, then?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
On the same page, up at the top, motion, it says Mr. Veman motioned, Mr. Veman moved, is correct.
Okay.
And that's all. I'm fine.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about any of the grammatical, grammatical changes in there? Okay. Motion to approve the meetings as amended. So moved. Second?
I'll say it.
Second. Moved by Jeff, seconded by Jan. Further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor? Four opposed? Okay. Four zero zero. Amendments are approved. Jump down to item four. Finalized finding of facts. And I did learn that Rock City is actually ROCK.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I looked it up online. So we got that.
They had, they'd sent something to me. It was ROC.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is if it's officially implied as ROC, is that the one we have to carry through?
Yeah. I mean, if, if it was, but they are officially known as ROCK.
I think the landowner's name is an LLC that's completely different.
It's not named after the bird.
Right.
What, the application that we received and the letter from them?
Yeah. Later on, it's ROCK, but the initial thing was ROC, so that, that just stuck in my head, and I just ran with it. So I'll have to do some double-checking going forward.
Okay. So for, right now, we want to assume that ROC is correct?
ROCK. ROCK is correct.
You want to assume ROCK is correct?
Yep.
Okay. And so we're assuming that the agenda then needs to be amended to correct it on the agenda from the previous meeting?
And the agenda? And the agenda for this meeting?
And the agenda for this meeting, yes. Both need to be corrected then.
Agendas. All right. I will do that.
Okay.
Similar to the comment about Vic Steinlass, I changed all the Mrs. to Ms. because I don't know if she, she told us she was Mrs.
Yeah.
I think when in Dallas.
Yep, sure. It's fine.
Okay.
I have one comment to make.
Okay.
If you go, scroll back towards the top. No, down a little bit. Okay. Project overview. You referred to Seuss Hutt as Mrs. everywhere. Is that her preference for title, or should we just go with?
That was, that was my comment just now, was that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Change the Mrs.'s to Ms.'s.
Yes, thank you.
Without lack of, without knowing.
I don't know why I did that.
If she's married and prefers it.
Let's see. Okay. Interesting. Four feet. There's this conclusion section here. I think there were a couple of comments about that, including myself. I typed some comments in there of how I propose to reward it. See if that fits with everyone else's. So board concludes.
Joe, where are your comments?
It's in blue. I typed them in.
Oh, that's yours.
So that's a little bit, Jeff, a little bit different, Jeff, than what you'd suggest, but I was trying to clarify it also.
Same, same meaning, though.
Yeah.
Because the way it's written, it sounded like they have not met the standard or the burden that they are under.
Agreed.
And it felt like, no, it's, it doesn't apply.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So you're okay with that, then, the way it's amended there? Okay. Everybody else?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Now, the final motion. There was a question as to whether there was a final motion that we went through and voted on.
So, yeah. So technically, well, this was your final motion. The conclusion bit, y'all didn't really do, but it's all, it's kind of intertwined. So the findings, facts, conclusions of law. You know, in the minutes portion of that, that kind of really sums that up a little bit. This is kind of separating those out a little bit. So if there's like a bit in here that's confusing a little bit, we can change it up a little bit. And then going forward, we can just make sure we do two. We have a conclusion statement, and then we have a finding statement. It's fine with me.
Okay. So you separated it out as two votes here for that reason, but I think, I'm sorry.
So, so in the findings of facts and conclusions of law, you have your.
Right.
You have your findings up above, and then your conclusion bit, and then you have your final motion.
Right.
So in your, you know, in a lengthy review, there's like all your sections and everything. Then there's that final bit of.
So I was, I was remiss last time in not conducting a final motion as suggested here. You're saying it was implied?
It's definitely implied.
Yeah.
Mainly because there's only one thing that y'all voted on. It wasn't like three or four sections.
Right.
Just 1303.
Right.
So if, if you're uncomfortable with it, we could probably remove the final motion So, if, if you're uncomfortable with it, we could probably remove the final motion and just let it ride as the conclusion, and then sign it, and we'll be okay. I highly doubt anybody's going to appeal it, but this kind of was the final motion that was made.
I just feel about that.
It's a little confusing to see two different votes.
My preference would be to call it a conclusion or final conclusion rather than to call it a motion.
Yeah.
So, just leave the conclusion?
Excuse me, but I think your point, though, going forward, is that we should have a vote on the finding of facts, and separately, we should have a vote on the final motion-
Yes.
To go forward.
Yes.
Okay, I understand that. So, we, I need to correct that going forward.
So, for this part, how do y'all feel? Do you want to, we can remove the final motion, just leave it as a conclusion and sign it? Be done with it?
I mean, is there a way we can remove just the line after, with, with the vote? The second vote?
That's right here.
Just that line? I mean, I understand the final motion. It's not, I mean, if you don't vote on it, what is it?
Or, or can you put that final motion somehow up above the vote and put both of those included on the same vote?
Well, I can say conclusion and final motion.
Yeah, you could do that.
That's better.
Yeah, I like that better.
I think that's what we thought we were doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. We can work with that.
And then we'll take that out.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
And then I'll, I'll format this up. And then, I guess the only thing is this, either we all sign this, everybody here all for you, or y'all do a motion now to have the chair sign it.
Oh, to have the chair sign it. Do we first move to approve this finding of fact, and then move to have Joe sign it?
Correct.
So, I'll move to approve the findings of fact for the application for Rock City Coffee.
As modified.
As modified.
Is, let's go with the motion first. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Okay, seconded. Discussion.
Okay. I, I thought our decision was that this did not require a full site plan review.
Correct, yes.
Wasn't that, that was our decision?
I think that's what this says.
So, that is not, that is not an adverse finding at all?
No, it is not.
In fact, it's, it's, it's saying you don't have to jump through any more hoops, right? And, but the way, to me, the way that this final, how come this keeps-
It sounds wrong.
This keeps doing this.
Well, because it says that the requirements were not met.
Yeah, it says-
The requirements for a, for a final site plan review were not met, is what it is.
Right. Well, but, but that's a, that's a funny way of stating it.
It is.
Right.
It is.
There's got to be, if I, if I could think about this for two seconds, there's got to be a way, because it sounds like, you know, we're denying something, and actually, we're not denying. We're saying you can go forward without this.
Yeah, we should just be saying something like the board concludes-
We should say this application does not require-
Tom, could I read what my, prior to Joe's comment here would have resulted in, verbiage wise, was, "The board concludes, based on the findings above, that the requirements of Section thirteen oh three of the Rockport Land Use Ordinance does not require a full site plan review for this application." Full stop.
That sounds fine.
That's right, yes.
That sounds bad.
Technically, it was correct the way it was written. It was just awkward.
It, it is. I, I understand. The requirement is not-
Not met.
Yes.
And that's a correct statement.
Yeah.
And to say denied, you know, it sounds, whoa, what happened here?
And we all agreed it was not met.
Okay.
Right, but they walked out happy. Okay, so I'll withdraw my motion to approve as modified.
Okay. Motion withdrawn. Would you care to introduce a new motion? Has modified here tonight?
Have you changed it now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move to accept the findings of fact for Rock City Coffee as modified.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jan. Further discussion on that? Okay. Okay, hearing no discussion. All in favor? Four opposed? Okay, that's passed four zero zero.
I perform a motion to have Chair Stenavsky sign the findings- Delegate the responsibility for signing this document to Chair Stenavsky.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
Delegating Joe to sign this.
Oh, yes.
All in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, four zero zero. That's passed. I will sign it. All right, so that's it. Any other business the board members have?
Move to adjourn?
No, okay. Just a quick reminder, our next meeting is March, just while we get everybody here.
Which one?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth. Yep.
Twentieth?
Twenty-eighth. Yeah, March twenty-eighth.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to make it. I have a graduation out of state that I have to attend.
Your own or somebody else's?
My wife's granddaughter.
You definitely have to go.
All right, very good. So, next meeting, the twenty-eighth, Tom will not be with us. We can arrange for an alternate to be here.
In fact, I just made a mark on my calendar tonight, because I said, you know, you better make sure that we have these dates cleared so I don't start making doctor's appointments and all this other stuff.
Well, drink a toast to her for us.
Yeah, she's going to become a nurse.
Good for her. Oh, wow, great.
Is it Rockport, perhaps?
No, she's, she's in Pennsylvania.
They have enough nurses in there.
Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, is it? I second?
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Jan. All in favor? Okay, four zero zero. Thank you. And the meeting is adjourned at six oh four PM. Thanks.
Six oh four PM. Is that a record?
Yeah, we're, I, I'm, we're still learning on the-